Digital forensics is the process of analyzing computers and audit logs. And other sources of information to obtain evidence that can be used for prosecution or in a court of law. Digital forensics involves gathering that information in a way that preserves it. In a way in which the target device is not tampered with. And then preserving that information and managing it in a chain of custody. With a documented uh series of transfers until it receive until arrives at the court. If an organization is planning to use uh legal means to punish one of their employees or if there's uh incident of fraudulent activity like in a financial uh business. Like a bank that has an employee that engages in accounting fraud. They may want to capture evidence on that accounting fraud by looking at that person's computer. They have to, in order to do that, they have to look at that computer in a certain way so that the uh defense attorney for the accused would not be able to claim that the evidence was tampered with so. Certain techniques have to be used to gather the evidence to ensure it's not tampered with in the first place because simply copying a hard drive in a way alters the files on the hard drive. So you have to use very specific tools and techniques when it comes to forensic investigations. To obtain this information preserve it in a way that can be admissible in a court of law. If you know if you access a file. You are your uh access attempt of that file is recorded within the file itself usually especially within the Windows operating system. Uh so by doing that by looking at a file in that manner using the device that the file is on. You're in fact tampering with that file because who's to say that you haven't made modifications to the file when you accessed it. And that's oftentimes evidence is inadmissible in court if it's uh obtained in this manner or say the police raid a apartment or a home and they discover a computer with evidence on it. Uh very often if the police were to shut down the computer or close the laptop and take it with them. That act in itself destroys a lot of the evidence that's on the uh computer system so. You have to use very specific techniques when it comes to forensics to maintain that evidence properly. The order of volatility describes how uh certain pieces information on the hard drive. How fragile they are essentially how susceptible they are to being disrupted or being deleted inadvertently. So in my example previously if the police were to raid a home and find a laptop. They were to shut down that laptop they would be destroying the random access memory the RAM okay just by shutting down the laptop that RAM is cleared from uh shutdown cycles. Each time the computer is powered on and powered off so without that RAM. Key bits of information that could be used by forensic analysts are lost okay. Some information like the information on the hard drive would still be intact but there's certain information that would be lost if any sort of tampering is done on the system and that's where the order volatility comes into play the order volatility explains or provides a a hierarchy of data in its order of volatility or I'd say how fragile that data is. So if we take a look at this list we see the most volatile data is cache memory. Okay it's very ephemeral data that can be uh deleted quite easily if you shut down the computer this data is lost. Very similar to RAM or in rounding tables if you're looking at network security device. And kernel statistics uh particularly on Linux devices so all of these. If the device is shut down or if too much time elapses that information or that memory is overwritten. And it becomes unusable okay but there's a lot of information that can be gathered there about what the computer was doing what tasks the computer was set on or the device was uh set to do just by looking at that information. Temporary file systems are next and then you get to disk drives so disk drives can withstand a shutdown of a device okay and temporary file systems may be able to may maintain on a device for I don't know several days or weeks even depending on how the device is used and if that file if those temporary files are purged periodically or what have you. Then you have remote logs and these are logs that are collected about the device from other devices on the network so. Say the device it connects to the internet. Logs from the router that the device connects through or the access point that the device connects to would be considered remote logs and since those aren't located on the device itself then those are much less volatile than say a disk drive. And then you have archive media and this is these are backup tapes backups or you know hard drive backups what have you. That's much less volatile than even the remote logs because remote logs might be wiped periodically so. You get a sense with the order of volatility it basically tells you the order in which you should collect the evidence so you should first focus on collecting the cache memory then the RAM routing tables and so on down the list. By doing this you're preserving as much evidence as possible as a forensic analyst. Uh and ensuring you have as much information to conduct the information as you could. On certain information like RAM or cache memory requires use of forensic tools to capture properly. Without those tools you're not gonna be able to uh capture that information. The chain of custody is a complete record of the evidence from where it is collected to when it gets to court so you need to have a full record. To include uh who obtained the evidence what protection mechanisms were placed on the evidence. Where that evidence was stored if it was transferred who it was transferred to. Uh who received it how that person kept the evidence and so on there needs to be a clear record uh in writing. That the evidence was stored and it no one else had access to the evidence or every person who had access to the evidence needed access and that is uh recorded if this prevents the claim that evidence was tampered with because you have a clear record from start to finish of where the evidence was. Without that chain of custody evidence can be thrown out in court it can't even be used or considered so. All the forensic investigation could be for not if you don't use a proper chain of custody. A legal hold is a a court order placed on an organization with a request for specific types of information. So the legal hold will request uh certain information from an organization and that organization will have to do their best to comply with that request. Uh depending on the region of the globe they live in so. The court order can be for something very vague and sometimes these legal holds are very hard to um fulfill. Because the court might just say oh we want records from the past two years on accounting. Okay and then the organization suddenly has to protect all of their accounting records for the past two years if they start deleting files or if they lose track of these files then they have uh they could be seen as tampering with the evidence or trying to cover something up so. Without proper a lot of times these legal holds don't have uh specifics and they are not very clear into what they want. So organizations sometimes have to scramble to consider what information could be required and have to seek clarity with the court system so. Uh legal holds can be very difficult to comply with just because the organization doesn't have a clear idea of what they need to submit so. And during a legal hold the organization is placed put under a much more scrutiny than normal so. Any activities like deleting data are examined a little more closely. The organization can still delete data or delete logs or delete accounts but that has to be uh specify within their policy okay if the organization doesn't have good policy or documented policy. Then if they start deleting data and this could just be backups that are over two years old that the organization doesn't have any use for but they start deleting data during this time where they have a legal hold and they have no justification to do so. Then the they could be accused by one of the legal parties of covering something up okay so the this is where policy becomes very important because you have to have a justification for all of your actions. Particularly when your organization is placed under such scrutiny if you're deleting a an old backup from two years ago. And in your policy it says okay backups two years or older are deleted. Then then that's perfectly fine you have justification point to the policy if anybody accuses you of you know doing a cover up or something you say hey you know this isn't our policy it's a standard procedure we're not doing anything. Out of the ordinary but if you don't have that in your policy and you say well we usually delete backups two years ago but you don't have it documented anywhere it's not approved by senior management then you have a problem. And sometimes legal holds affect the organization even if it has nothing to do with that organization itself so in a cloud environment. You have a concept known as multi-tenancy and we talked about this we talked about uh cloud environments. Where you will have maybe multiple tenants on one you know storing their information. And that information is stored using one device okay so one device would service multiple clients. From the cloud service providers perspective so cloud service provider has uh storage servers. And they accept multiple tenants they accept multiple customers and they allocate space accordingly. One device of theirs might service eight or so clients okay so if a legal hold is placed on one of those clients and the data that they have for the data in the cloud then all of a sudden the cloud service provider needs to halt all activity on that server. If you're also a tenant and some of your data is on that server all of a sudden you're affected by that legal hold unless the cloud uh service provider has backed up your data in some manner with another server it all depends on the level of service you've purchased but oftentimes that legal hold can affect you and you have you had nothing to do with the organization at all so it's a risk within cloud computing. So again organizations have to be very careful during legal holds and legal holds are requests for data within an organization at which point the organization needs to do everything they can to protect and preserve that data. While a a forensic investigation goes on. Okay let's uh let's keep going I want to talk about forensics today. As you can see so we're gonna keep going with forensics. And again if you have any questions or if there's anything you want to talk about today during the study session just enter it in the chat. I'll be happy to address your question or we can go over whatever topics uh you want but today's uh focus so far is gonna be forensics. Just give me a second. We'll go over data acquisition. So with that acquisition and digital forensics in particular. When you retrieve data from a device like a laptop or a desktop a tablet what have you. Oftentimes a forensic analyst will capture an entire system image okay and by doing this the analyst has a snapshot in time of what the computer was doing the operating state of the computer the configuration settings all of that. Uh at the time at the very beginning of the investigation. So they use forensic tools to capture that system image and by using those tools they're able to take that snapshot and then with that snapshot they can conduct further investigations they don't have to touch the target device. Not to tamper with the device and there's no risk of tampering with the evidence. Once that system image is captured uh the image itself is then copied and those copies are where the forensic analyst uh performs the investigation okay so there's an original copy that's made and that's preserved and then multiple copies are made after that. And those are kept uh for investigative purposes okay. The process of capturing the system image does not modify the system in any way. If you use proper forensic tools or techniques so. You don't have to worry about uh tampering with the evidence at all. I there's a many different forensic tools to talk about to use regarding that. And in Linux the DD command can be used to make a forensic image just like this and it's built into Linux as well. Besides the system image forensic analysts often examine network logs. Uh network traffic and this can be analyzed through logs from a an access point like a router router logs. Or anything revolving uh a network you can use a intrusion detection device you can use uh firewall logs all of these logs can be used to assist with the investigation. Certain devices can be or certain uh actions can be attributed back to devices using that device's MAC address. Or say they have a permanent IPv six address you can trace uh actions back to a computer in that manner even through an internet connection with an IPv six address. Okay but at the same time IP addresses and MAC addresses can be easily spoofed so if you have somebody who knows what they're doing performing illegal activities. The one of the first things they're gonna do is spoof their MAC address and their IP address okay. Actions can also be traced back to a dynamic IPv four address if you're investigating somebody within an organization and you have access to that organization's uh router then you're gonna know what MAC addresses that router attributed IPv four addresses to and even even then you can spoof the MAC address for a device but you can uh pretty much narrow down what device is uh being targeted you can ascertain what device which actions attribute to even if the MAC address is spoofed if you have access to the the connection method of that device so if the device is connecting to the access point you have access to the access points uh logs and settings and you're gonna know what device was doing what on that network. And then if you need to track somebody through the internet to determine maybe point of origin and possibly set up some IP blocking. Then you can uh find very easily uh the attackers internet service provider and then sometimes you can track you can contact the internet service provider and retrieve logs from them to maybe determine which IP address was attributed from that I in a that internet service provider. It's gonna be more difficult if you're you have a a hacker from a foreign country or somewhere where you have a differing jurisdictions I mean every country is different laws it can be very difficult to maintain a to try and prosecute somebody from another country just because you're not gonna get the same amount of cooperation from that country as you would uh somebody within your own country. So you can't use US hacking laws to try and target somebody in Russia for example it's not gonna work. Russia is not gonna comply with US laws in many circumstances in the vast majority of circumstances so. Something to consider anyway. So when conducting a forensic uh ex investigation. Forensic experts will oftentimes take a video camera and they'll set that video camera up on a tripod right over their shoulder okay and the camera will be pointed right at the device that they're looking at so say they're trying to capture an image from a target device they'll a video camera themselves doing all of these activities okay. And it'll show their keyboard they'll show their input devices it'll show uh the device they're trying to target and what tools they're using to do so to create the image and in this way you have a video record of the actions the investigator is performing. That does not in any way affect the target system okay so you are capturing and you're recording all of the actions necessary or uh the actions that are being done within the investigation without having to digitally alter the information or the data on the target system. So this can be used to refute claims that evidence was tampered with by showing a complete uh video of all the actions that were done to the evidence itself it's a very good technique so often employed by forensic analysts. Also when we talk about capturing video you can talk about surveillance footage as well so consider surveillance footage. And how surveillance footage can help identify when an individual was in a certain location so if you're conducting an investigation on say an employee and they've done malicious activity they stolen from the organization you can help you can use surveillance footage to help determine their location determine if they've logged on to certain devices at certain times. Time offset is basically what time zone a device is set to okay and whenever you conduct a forensic investigation you need to determine what time zone the device is set to what time zone uh you're currently in. Sometimes devices are gonna be set for different times or you might have a device from another time zone that you're investigating. And you know say you have something from the Pacific time zone within the United States and your investigating team your investigation is being conducted from the East Coast. Uh this happens quite often so you just need to record the time offset and that's gonna be measured in uh plus or minus hours so you have a max offset of uh plus or minus twelve hours basically. And that's gonna be the non-hours offset from uh your current time zone so. All of this is based on universal coordinate time or UTC which is the same as Greenwich uh mean time. And that is that has a time offset of zero okay. Every other time zone is offset from that time zone by a certain number so in the East Coast United States in Eastern daylight time it's negative four. The United States observes daylight savings time which is where clocks are changed by an hour. Halfway through the year okay so when there's a so for half of the year we use Eastern daylight's time in the East Coast and half the year there's Eastern Standard Time okay. And the same thing happens for most time zones within the United States you use one of two type of times. If you want to say generically Eastern time you would say ET Eastern time. And that would not have a designation for daylight savings time or not but uh you know Eastern daylight time is used uh has a four hour offset negative four and if you're uh to the east of Greenwich Mean Time or Greenwich England. Then you would be plus okay until you get all the way to the point where those two switch so uh something like Hungary Hungary would have I believe it's plus four. Was it plus three one of the two and different countries within Europe would be plus usually plus from uh England or I think Portugal is negative one. I could be wrong about that anyway so that's the time offset it's just your time zone and what time zone the device is at what time zone uh the investigator is at what time zone the network security devices are set at etcetera etcetera you need to record the time in a way so that all the times can be synchronized. Alright cryptographic hashes as we talked about are excellent tools for maintaining data integrity. And they can be helpful in a forensic investigation when a forensic analyst first takes that initial forensics image. They can apply cryptographic hash that image and then store that hash. And then at any point throughout the investigation the investigator can prove that that original image has not been tampered with. By again applying that same cryptographic hash and comparing the two hash values. If they're the same there's been no alteration to that image and this can be true of any digital evidence. You can prove that evidence has not been tampered with by recording hashes when you first obtained the evidence for all of the data and then later applying the same cryptographic hash to compare the hash values. If they're the same there's been no tampering and that's proven through the use of the cryptographic hash. So much like a chain of custody proves uh in writing that something has not been tampered with by showing who has access to it and how it's been protected. The cryptographic hash is even more reliable because it shows with this mathematic algorithm that there has literally been no tampering of the evidence so it's a it's an excellent tool message digest five is one of the most popular tools for cryptographic hashes it's very easy to use and it's very readily available. Screenshots can be taken uh they're basically a picture of what's currently on the screen so here's a screenshot of this which is so I've already I've taken a screenshot when I was making uh this frame. And that's what I'm showing here so it's a screen of what is currently on the computer system. It's very useful for uh in certain areas proving certain points within a forensic investigation. So when you're investigating uh one of the images you know the forensic image a copy of the forensic image. You can take screenshots of certain configuration settings uh certain activity logs so instead of just running the night you take a actual screenshot. Then you could print those screenshots out or show them in a slideshow that's presented to the court as actual evidence like oh here are the configuration settings these are the programs the this person had open this is these are the files they've had access because you're showing what the computer is showing so they're very useful they're also used in assessments vulnerability assessments uh security control assessments. Uh audits various computer audits and security audits to demonstrate compliance so. If you want to demonstrate that you are complying with certain security controls that your organization employs. To say oh yeah we do that same configuration on our computers then you can take up a screenshot you can create a screenshot of that configuration setting and give it to the auditor give it to the assessor and say oh they can look at that screenshot. Look at that file it's saved just like any other image found and you have proven because you're taking a snapshot of the computer what is actually in place. You can take screenshots with many different settings on most keyboards you have a P R T S C R or P R S C R button it's the print screen button is located above the backspace button usually along the same bar as the function buttons F one through twelve. Uh in Windows you have uh Windows ten and Windows ten comes with uh Windows snipping tool. And older versions of Windows have this as well and it comes default and it's a utility that can be used to take screenshots is very useful. If you're using a Mac you can use shift command three and it'll take a picture of your entire screen as well. So screenshots are very helpful not only with forensic investigations. When it comes to any type of investigation talking to the people involved is very helpful these are witness interviews. And you can find a lot of information about you know the activities of the the target so who uh the investigation concerns and what they were doing at the time what devices they accessed. Anybody else they talked to during that time period or any other uh activities they were involved in I mean it's a witness so you can get the idea what I'm talking about here. When taking witness testimony though you need to make sure to record exactly what the witness says. Either with a video recording like maybe a recorded teleconference or a have a camcorder setup or a microphone or you write down write out everything the witness says or you have the witness write in their own handwriting what they said. Or you type it out and then you have the witness sign it you have you sign it as the interviewer. And then you have a a third party or observer sign it as well and in that way you can preserve that interview. And the witness can no longer refute what they said at a later date. Uh it's it's proven it's been observed the words are in writing and they've been agreed upon by all parties so. A lot of times by interviewing a witness you're gonna find things that you had no idea existed or maybe other activity that you weren't aware of when you first conducted the investigation so witness interviews can be very helpful in that regard. Alright. Let's continue with uh forensics. And we're gonna talk about preservation of data. So data preservation is very important with forensic investigations, you're collecting a lot of information, you're collecting those forensic images. Collecting audit logs, uh network security device logs, access point logs, all sorts of logs. And affect the target system, you're affecting, you're taking uh. Information from uh hard drives, all of this information needs to be preserved and kept. Uh within that chain of custody until it can be admitted to court, so it's usually a very good idea to keep backups. Uh to keep have some sort of redundancy in place in case there's uh failure. On the primary storage system that you're using to preserve the evidence, so that's what happens when we talk about a preservation. Data recovery refers to the ability to obtain information from sources that. Are usually deemed as irretrievable, so. If a file is deleted within the Windows new technology file system or NTFS, so if you have a Windows hard drive that's. Formatted with NTFS and you delete a file, uh goes to your recycling bin. You can easily retrieve that file from your recycling bin, say you empty your recycling bin and the file's gone, you can't find the file in your file directory, okay? Oftentimes, you can retrieve that file, depending on the type of uh hard drive you're using, but you can retrieve that file. Because when the file is deleted, deleted from the recycling bin. It's not overwritten immediately, for performance reasons, Windows doesn't immediately overwrite the file. It just allocates that space as uh free, okay, so it marks that space as uh free. And then when that space is needed for other files, say this drive starts filling up, then it's overwritten, okay? And even when a file is overwritten. Remnants of the file can still remain on a hard drive and it gets possible to retrieve portions of that file, so. If you delete a file or if a lots of times. Uh targeted investigation will delete a file and they think it's deleted from their hard drive, but really it can be easily recovered with recovery tools. And there's uh recovery tools that are readily available to analyze a drive and then retrieve that information. When you conduct a forensic investigation, it's very important to track your man hours, you track the amount of hours. Put on the investigation, investigations are costly, usually forensic investigations are billed by the hour. Not by the investigation, because. Once you get into an investigation, you may discover a different path or different avenues that need investigating that. Weren't included in the original scope of the investigation, so normally forensic investigations are billed by the hour. And that's why um hour tracking is very important. There's certain tools, there's certain software, soft services offerings, cloud offerings that you can use, you know, online applications. That you can use to track hours, some organizations will employ a time card keeping system on their employee issued laptops. But any way you wanna do it, you need to record how many hours were spent in the investigation and what activities were spent. Uh you know, what, how many hours were spent on each activity? That's all this topic refers to. Alright, and we're gonna wrap up our session here with our last bit on forensics. Now, if you like what you see. Highly recommend you check out our website, cybercrafttrading.com, put a link in the description for our free video training, if you wanna learn how you can. Earn your Security Plus certification within one week. Starting at eighty average uh yearly salary eighty-five thousand dollars per year. That's the average salary a Security Plus practitioner will earn, so that number is either. Uh less or more depending on the practitioner, if you have more than one certification, you expect to earn much more. Uh if that's your first time getting in the field, you might earn a little less, but still, Security Plus practitioners. Those certification holders earn average yearly eighty-five thousand dollar salary. Uh it's a great field, cybersecurity is one of the fastest growing technical fields in the world. And there's plenty of job opportunities, particularly in our current situation, so I highly recommend you check out the video training and you can take my Security Plus course. To be certified within one week, my course teaches you everything you need to know, it has forty hours of content. You can schedule the exam on the first day of the course, I walk you through each step, we talk about every topic. I explain in detail each of the topics and then from there. I give you practice exams that are set up exactly like the practice exam you're gonna find on test day. You take those tests, if you pass those, you're gonna pass the exam, I guarantee it. If you don't pass the exam, you get your money back, we have a full hundred percent uh money back guarantee, if you're not satisfied with the course in fourteen days. Just email me and I'll give you a hundred percent refund, no questions asked, but I'm, I guarantee you'll pass. When it comes to intelligence gathering, active logging is often used to capture information on attackers into the network. So normally logging is used for day-to-day operations, uh it's used to determine user activities, to collect network security statistics. To determine what is, what traffic flow is is going in and out of the network and just basically, basic debugging, error debugging, et cetera. If you wanna capture additional information, though, you can kinda gain an idea of. Different attack patterns or reconnaissance efforts that attackers may be employing. Active logging is often used in conjunction with a honeypot or a honey network. And these are devices, a honeypot is a a device, a dummy device placed on the network. To look like a a real device and try to draw attackers to that device. So that they exploit that device and not a real device on the network, that's, it's a couple of different types of honeypots, we've talked about this in a previous domain. And a honey network is an entire network usually set up to gather information on the attacker, uh that's usually. Filled with some security vulnerabilities and that's usually used by threat intelligence firms, so. Most firms don't use active logging because it takes up more network resources, it takes up more storage space, they just use the logs they need. For data operations, but if you wanna gain information on attackers and attack patterns, you might wanna use active logging. Strategic intelligence is the collection of intelligence to identify trends and threat patterns. Uh that attackers may be employing and some firms like McAfee are dedicated to doing this type of strategic intelligence. Strategic intelligence can be used to generate uh new security patterns, new security techniques. To change policy, to adapt to trends within cybersecurity, within a trends uh that attackers are employing. And some large firms actually employ strategic uh intelligence teams. Strategic intelligence is often used hand in hand with threat intelligence, it's often, at least with cybersecurity, the same thing. And if you look, uh I'm gonna show you the McAfee Threat Report. McAfee Threat Report. Is a periodic report put out by McAfee Labs. And this is one example of strategic intelligence, so. Their most recent report is from August twenty nineteen, they usually pull one out every year at least and usually uh. Even sooner than that, but. This is example, this is their page and from here you can see statistics on the types of malware being used by attackers. Different attack vectors, different ransomware, uh the trends within ransomware. And they'll have reports throughout the years, you see here in twenty eighteen, they've done several different ports. And if you look up uh cybersecurity threat report. Within Google, you'll find a bunch of different uh threat reports, here's one from Sonicwell, let's look at the top one here, we're Sofos Labs, okay? So here we go, twenty twenty cyberwall, cyber threat report. Sofos Labs Threat Report. And this is just another type of, this is a type of strategic intelligence, okay? Ransomware is on the rise, here we talk about Mega Cortex ransomware kill chain, kill chain is a method of attacking. That's a attack mythology. How ransomware has evolved over the years and what the ransomware trends are, so all of these are. And here's all the different types of uh ransomware, we have WannaCry here, Dharma, Bitpamer, Ryuk, these are common uh. Ransomware types, so you can see these within the threat report. WannaCry is a worm, a lot of these are targeted, uh Ryuk is one that's been used a lot with. Monero, which is uh one of the more popular cryptocurrencies for. Cyber criminals because it's it's very difficult to track transactions, but anyway, that's a type of threat threat report. So. That's the nature of strategic intelligence, it's gathering patterns and trends so that you can either sell that information or provide that and. Uh increase your credibility, so McAfee would use that to increase their credibility so they could sell their antivirus platform, et cetera. Counterintelligence is the process of opposing the reconnaissance efforts of an organization, so. Uh hackers also perform reconnaissance, they perform intelligence gathering, they wanna know the latest security trends, they wanna know the latest uh techniques employed by organizations. So counterintelligence is counteracting that, okay? And oftentimes in cybersecurity, counterintelligence is kinda blurred with strategic intelligence and threat intelligence. In a traditional like military intelligence setting, strategic intelligence would be gathering trends on. The military capabilities of another country. And what weapon systems are employing, what tactics, techniques, procedures are employing and counterintelligence would be counteracting the espionage efforts of another country. But in cybersecurity, these terms kinda blend together. So once you understand how an attacker is conducting reconnaissance, okay, then you can put countermeasures in place and that's the nature of counterintelligence, uh. And like we've talked about, some large firms can afford to employ a dedicated intelligence team. Many can't and many will rely on those threat reports like the one we looked at from McAfee, so. That's intelligence in a nutshell. Okay, that ends our session today, I hope you enjoyed, I hope you uh got a lot out of it, uh if you. If you need. Any, if you have any questions, please email me, info@cybercrafttraining.com or if you have any uh. Other questions you wanna talk about, how to get certain certifications or how best to apply for certifications, I'll be happy to help talk you through that. That's what CyberCraft Training is here for, you know, our team is help, is here to help you, so. Info@cybercrafttraining.com, I'll put a link in the description and if you have uh. Any questions, please feel free to reach out, so thanks for attending, appreciate it, I'll catch you next time.